And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's City Council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the chamber is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will note the picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Counselor Dilaba.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Riche.
Here.
Counselor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pros pending or current litigation.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Riche.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
Mayor, I would ask that our DPW director and engineers join us for the executive session.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, right. So, the paper. Lots, lots of getting, yeah, actually looks like a cheap little sound. Yeah. First, all those one churches. And then. All right. Oh. Right, sorry. It's. We do not have any presentations or announcements tonight. We do have one public hearing tonight regarding the city disposal EPA cleanup grant application to provide funding to carry out cleanup activities at brownfield sites owned by the city within the city's designated brownfield opportunity area. And I will open that up to public here now. Anyone attending in person would like to see, please come down to the podium, you have five minutes. Is there anyone remotely attending?
I do not see any hands raised.
And clear this public hearing closed? At this time, anyone attending person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, you have five minutes.
Come here, Scotty, would you mind if I hand it over?
Oh, no.
Papers? Thank you. My name is Don McCarthy, and I'd like to talk about how understaffing the fire department adversely affects the budget. I wanted to do this at the last council meeting, but there was not a public speaking. I've worked for the city for the last thirty-five years, thirty-four of those at the fire department, the last twenty-two of those as assistant fire chief. Last year as assistant chief, I was asked to prepare the fire department budget. I was directed to prepare the budget based on a four-man minimum staffing. I prepared the preliminary budget and submitted it to the city manager, and that's attachment one. I presented the city manager several scenarios showing the correlation between staffing levels, overtime, and hazard pay costs. To summarize, if the city were to hire three additional firefighters, bringing the total staffing to twenty, there would have been a savings of approximately seventy thousand dollars. But this savings most likely would have been offset by the cost of health insurance. Now would have been actually two hires and bringing Jake back from, from layoff. Other factors that needed to be considered at that time were there was only one name on the firefighter list. That was a gentleman from Syracuse who wanted to get hired up here and transfer back down closer to home. If we were to provisionally hire firefighters and they didn't score in the top three in the civil service test, they wouldn't be able to remain on the job, and we would have been back to square one. And third, the safer grant application period was opening on January third, and the city manager planned on submitting an application to get positions through the safer grant. In the end, the city manager decided to budget for seventeen members and hope for the best with the safer grant. In July of twenty twenty-two, the city reinstated the five-man minimum staffing. This required an additional two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in overtime for twenty twenty-two. At this point, it was apparent that increasing the fire department staffing levels would be less costly than paying overtime twenty-four seven. We were still hopeful that we may be successful with the safer grant. But the safer grant would not apply to any individuals that were hired prior to the award date. The safer award period closed on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. FEMA made a hundred and eighteen awards totaling three hundred and sixty million dollars. Only two safer grants were awarded in New York State, and unfortunately, ours was not one of them. There are still two hundred million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act funds that were added to this year's safer grant. To the best of my knowledge, those funds have not yet been awarded. Now we find ourselves in a familiar situation, trying to agree on the best way to balance the budget. For a second year in a row, I prepared a spreadsheet showing the correlation between staffing levels, overtime, and hazard pay costs, and that's attachment two. This time, I base the figures on the five-man minimum staffing. The figures show without a doubt that the city would have substantial savings by putting on four additional firefighters. After figuring benefits, I calculate the savings to be over two hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. And these are not one-time savings, they continue through to the end of the contract. To go a step further, the city could actually save over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year if they hired eight firefighters. I know the chances of that are slim to none, but it's something that needs to be seriously considered. You need to explore every avenue to reduce expenses. Other factors that need to be taken into consideration this time is there are several names on the civil service list. It's likely that some of them are already trained. And if you're awarded the safer grant, any of the additional fines after hiring personnel, you'd be able to increase the staffing further and completely eliminate hazard pay and drastically reduce overtime without having to pay the salary for additional personnel. I understand the optics of hiring additional firefighters when the city is facing layoffs in other departments. The reality is, if you don't hire additional firefighters, you will most likely find yourselves in a position where you're going to need to make deeper cuts to balance the budget. Take that four hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings and use it to maintain staffing in other departments. The proposed twenty twenty-three overtime budget for the fire department is five hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eight dollars. According to my calculations, to maintain the five-man minimum, and I recommend that you do, you will need to. According to my calculations, to maintain the five-man minimum, and I recommend that you do, you will need to spend seven hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and two dollars in overtime. And that's attachment three that comes, that shows my calculations. The twenty twenty-three budgeted amount is actually a hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars below the guaranteed minimum that it will cost to maintain a five-man staffing level with a four-man shift. And that doesn't take into account any additional overtime that's paid throughout the year. So by not hiring additional firefighters, the city will be requiring the remaining members to each work an average of nine hundred and thirty-one and a half hours overtime per year. That works out to forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars of overtime for each person. In addition, by not hiring additional firefighters, the city will pay each member twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars in hazard pay. The perception is that firemen are greedy. But if you hired four additional firefighters, each member can expect to make thirty-one thousand dollars less in twenty twenty-three than if you didn't hire anyone. If you hired eight additional firefighters, each member can expect to make fifty-seven thousand dollars less than they would if you didn't hire anyone. It seems to me if the firemen were greedy, they wouldn't be urging the city to hire more firefighters, they would just take the money and run. The firemen have said time and time again, they choose more personnel over more money. Unfortunately, that's not their decision to make, it's yours. When I have, if I had a couple more minutes, I'd like to show just a quick, I have a drawing on the back of how I come up with the manpower and the, and the costs. But each shift has four members on it, each one of those members is making an average of thirty-four dollars an hour, plus six dollars an hour hazard pay. You need an extra person every hour of every day. That comes out to eight thousand plus hours, I have that on, on that back chart. Eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty hours, you're paying somebody fifty-one dollars an hour overtime, every hour, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. If you were to put on one additional person, this person would make eighteen dollars an hour. It would also take three, we've got four guys under it, three, six, nine, twelve dollars an hour off hazard pay. Eighteen dollars an hour, twelve dollars off hazard pay, there's six dollars an hour that this guy is making, but he'd also be entitled to three dollars hazard pay. So he's nine dollars an hour, as opposed to fifty-one dollars an hour times eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty hours. That's guaranteed.
And then?
Yes.
What about next year? What about next year when the costs go up another million dollars?
No, no, but I'm saying.
No, what about next year when costs go up another million dollars? We can't afford either scenario, that's the problem.
Right, but, but to pay the overtime in lieu of that.
It's six man, so we have to hire six firefighters, first you have twenty-four firefighters.
Yes.
And next year, costs will go up a million, a million and a quarter again.
Right, but.
So, but, but the fire department, we're saving money by having twenty-four, twenty-eight, but what about the rest of the services?
No, you're saving, you would save four hundred and fifty thousand over overtime.
Four hundred and some thousand, and the costs go up a million. So now, we're eight hundred thousand dollars short again. That's more police, that's more DPW, that's no capital projects in this city. This city has stopped repairing itself, improving itself, it's, it will be a dead city.
Right, but Mike, if you don't hire anyone, you have to pay the overtime. It's, it's one or the other, or you don't pay the overtime and don't do the minimum five-man staffing, that.
Maybe we, maybe we should consider doing away with the hazard pay and bringing volunteers in and living with.
Well, that's something that, that needs to be addressed after the contract's over, I'm sure. But, but that five men, the five, right? But that, but that five guys, now you, let's say you had the five-man shift, I'm just going to finish up, it'll take, just take a minute. Each one of these guys is making thirty-seven dollars or thirty-four dollars an hour, and they're each getting three dollars an hour hazard pay. You still are going to be short six thousand hours a year because all of these guys are entitled to vacation, holiday time, they all work an extra two hours a week, it's a hundred and ten hours a year that they get to take off, they have to take it off during the year. So every time anybody takes time off, fifty-one dollars an hour for, for when any of these guys take time off. Hire a guy at eighteen dollars an hour, because that's what starting sa- salary is, you lose three, six, nine, twelve, fifteen dollars an hour off hazard pay. You're getting that guy for three dollars an hour as opposed to fifty-one dollars an hour. The math doesn't lie, it's the way that it comes out.
The contract doesn't either, but it isn't, isn't the problem.
No, but you know, that's what, that's the way the contract was designed. So that it's, it was, if you were to go back to contracts, hazard pay was the cost of the missing firefighter divided by the rest of the guys on the ship. It was set up in there so that if you didn't hire, you had to pay that same amount to everybody else on the ship. It was changed a couple contracts ago to a flat dollar amount. But that's the, the reasoning on hazard pay. So it would always be cheaper to hire that guy than to just split that money up between the rest and pay overtime for the shortage. So I mean, I'm just trying to present the number.
Or two years now, or two years now, when there's twenty-four firefighters and there's no police department or no DPW.
Yep. Nobody. But if you have, if you stick with sixteen firefighters, then you're going to have to cut somewhere else to pay that overtime.
That's what we're doing now.
That's what I'm saying. You, you could take that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings if you were to hire eight, think outside the box.
The fire department is cannibalizing the police department, that's the bottom line.
No, they, they are if you don't hire anyone. But if you were to hire.
Seventeen firefighters, do away with the hazard pay and bring volunteers in, we have safety and we have other services in our city.
Because that's not what the contract says. You know, I don't work there anymore.
DPW that.
I don't work there anymore, I'm a taxpayer, I want my fire department, but I also want my police department, I want my DPW. And this scenario gives you all of them. It gives you a, a decently staffed fire department and allows you to maintain your other positions because otherwise, if you don't, you have to take money from police and DPW to pay these overtime costs.
For one year, Doc?
No, no, this is every, this is every year of the contract.
Just keep snowballing.
The numbers are on there, they, they, they don't lie.
But, but next year, costs is going to go up over a million dollars.
But so will your overtime costs, and so will, it's still.
Where are we going to get that difference in money? We don't have, revenue hasn't grown in this city in decades.
Right, but if you're comparing sixteen, if you're comparing sixteen firefighters to twenty-four firefighters, twenty-four is cheaper. And, and that's following the contract, if you decide not to follow the contract, then you can make it whatever you want.
Mayor, Mayor, I would, I would advise the mayor to move on with personal appearances, there are some issues under litigation.
Kathy, can I get a copy of that spreadsheet from Mr. McCarthy and email to me, please?
At this moment, sir, or after the meeting?
After the meeting, after the meeting's fine.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Michael Tulley, I live at two fourteen Hamilton Street. And as a citizen, I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. First, I thank Ms. Smith for presenting to the city council last Thursday a more responsible proposal for the city's twenty-three budget that was presented to you on November first. While I hope it is not the final budget adopted by city council, it does provide a good starting point for further discussion. I also thank Ms. Smith for making the twenty-three, twenty budget proposal available to the public in advance of that meeting. I will wait until the public hearing to offer follow-up to the suggestions I offered in my letter to Ms. Smith last week. I do have one comment. I think when scheduling department presentations, you should invite the fire chief to make another presentation because the numbers in the fire department budget in the accepted preliminary twenty-three city budget do not agree with those in the chief's October seventeenth presentation. In his presentation, when comparing the cost of twenty-three to a seventeen employee roster to a twenty-one employee roster, was the schedule he provided to you. The chief estimates total compensation and fringe benefits totaling three million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The total compensation and fringe benefits in the accepted preliminary twenty-three budget, which I believe also is a roster of seventeen employees, is three billion, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The difference between the chief's numbers and the city budget as it currently exists is a little bit more than five hundred thousand dollars. So it seems to me there's some reconciliation that needs to take place with those numbers. I remind city council, during the chief's October seventeenth presentation, the city manager emphasized that the estimated costs of this handout were developed with the help of the city controller and that these numbers were solid. Well, the preliminary twenty-three city budget provides updated numbers, I think the chief's estimated cost for a seventeen employee roster and a twenty-one employee roster may need to be revised in another presentation made to you. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Anyone attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
Does this correspond, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda, the claim is enumerated in general fund warrant number twenty dash twenty-two, amount of one million, two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, ninety-eight cents. Library warrant number twenty dash twenty-two, about zero dollars. Capital fund warrant number twenty dash twenty-two, amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars, eighty-eight cents. Community development warrant, number twenty dash twenty-two, amount of nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, six cents. And community renewal fund warrant, number twenty, twenty dash twenty-two, amount of zero dollars. As audited, be and saying hereby our order paid, I so move.
I'll second it.
Kathy, could we follow?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight. So we have council action, our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, interim city manager Andrew Stuck.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a resolution authorizing the submission of a twenty twenty-three U.S. Environmental Protection Agency cleanup grant application. Whereas the city of Augsburg desires to prepare a cleanup grant application for Thirty Main Street, formerly Saint Lawrence Food Corporation, to carry out and perform cleanup activities. And whereas the former industrial property was acquired by the city on June two thousand and nine for unpaid real property taxes through the foreclosure process. And whereas the property has been the target of vandalism and is a source of blight on the neighborhood. And whereas the city is eligible to apply for up to one million dollars from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield cleanup program. And whereas in accordance with the bipartisan infrastructure law, cost sharing and matching funds are not required under this competition. And whereas this application will promote smart growth principles of infill development and take advantage of and enhance existing infrastructure and facilities that will attract, create, and sustain future employment opportunities. Now therefore be resolved that the Augsburg City Council authorizes the Director of Planning and Development to submit a grant application for the proposed Brownfield cleanup at property located at Thirty Main Street within the city's designated Brownfield opportunity area and EPA area-wide planning district. Be it further resolved, if awarded, the city manager or authorized representative is authorized to enter in, into any necessary contracts to accept and administer this grant expeditiously.
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
So on the fourth whereas, was that a written mistake?
Um, this was prepared as if it was one property, but in fact, there are nine individual tax map parcels, so it constitutes multiple sites and allows us to apply for up to one million.
So are we going to change this out here?
You can, I mean, I already got the million.
I know. So other than that, I think, I think we should amend it to a million to make it official or?
I'll second it.
Sure, I may have done first.
What's the match on?
It's read into the record. Sorry, go ahead.
There is typically a twenty percent match, but under the current federal stimulus funding, there is no required match for this.
It's good.
Um, Kathy, could we follow all?
We have a motion and a second on the table, so are we proceeding with that, Counselor Scamperey, or are we going to withdraw?
If, if we don't need to do it, that's fine.
I feel it was read into the record accurately, correct, Andrea?
Yes.
Then that's fine.
You're telling you're withdrawing, sir?
Yes.
Okay. And this will be a rule call on the resolution as read into the record.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Public Works, Chain Brown.
A resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a management service agreement for the city water and wastewater facilities with development of the North Country.
I'll move that. I'll second it. Give us a rundown.
Yeah, this is for both plants, it will cover, we do not have currently a four A operator at our wastewater treatment plant, and it also covers the management services, they do several different things for us, it also covers what we outside have to bring in an engineer to do for us, paperwork and signing off and stuff.
Why, why do we pick five years?
And that's the average term of their contract, is, is five years, we did question that.
I'd be comfortable with three, there's an early termination, I know.
Yep.
It's, it, it still should be three so that people are clear and, you know, there's, it should be reviewed every three or five years is too long, that's like the other contracts we're not.
The inflation rate, we won't be lucky.
Uh, so this is the development.
Things in our favor, though.
This is the Development Authority standard contract, I believe Kerry Tuttle is here to speak to that, we did ask about that. Um, I did express a concern since the city is in a management transition, um, we talked about whether or not a one-year contract would be prudent. This is their standard contract, they don't typically do short-term contracts because of the amount of effort that goes into their, into the services they provide. But Ms. Tuttle is here and I'm sure she could speak to that directly, uh, if council wants to know why a five-year term is being recommended. This is the exact agreement that we have done in the past, and there is a termination clause which we did, uh, the Director of Public Works and I did review with the Development Authority to make sure we don't have to have reason to terminate the contract. So should your new management team want to go a different route, there's.
I, I, I'd make an, I'd propose an amendment and have the agreement amended for three years.
And soon keep it five.
I think so, I, I'd second it, I mean, I mean, every, I just don't like five-year contracts. Do we have any five-year contracts with anybody else that's coming outside working inside?
I guess I'd have to look into that for you, counselor.
I just, I bet. There's only two other contracts I saw that was over five, five and over, so I don't think so.
If five years is the, if, if five years is the standard for Dank, will they, uh, if we look to do it three years, will they not do our services?
I don't think so.
Could we ask Kerry to speak to that?
There's simple questions.
So as Andrea said, our, our contracts are five-year terms typically. What I can tell you is we have done shorter-term contracts historically, but typically, that does not work in the municipality's favor for the reasons that Andrea explained. If we do a shorter-term contract, we have fixed costs that we have to cover in a shorter duration. If we have a five-year term, which is what all of our operation and maintenance or management service contracts are, we can spread those costs out over those five years. So I can tell you, when we previously proposed a prior contract with the city, we did do a shorter term, and I believe the city actually asked us to break it out and present a one-year, a three-year, and a, and a longer-term contract. And you did see the difference because we gave you a side-by-side comparison, we showed you if we're only going to do a one-year contract, this is what the pricing will be. If we do a three-year contract, this is what the pricing will be, and if we do a five-year contract, this is what the pricing will be. The escalation on the five-year contract is going to be the lowest amount, and as I explained to Andrea, there's that termination clause with no, with no cause. So, and I, so you know, for the city's purpose, certainly, can we do a shorter-term contract? Yes, we can. I would not recommend that because the pricing on the three-year term, the escalation will likely be higher, and there's really no risk of doing a five-year term when you can terminate it anytime with no cause.
I'd recommend that we do a three-year term and we not do a short contract, except if you see three-year. You know, we might have a change of plans, things may change. You can't, but you know, is it, is, are people aware of that when they see it's a five-year agreement? I mean, that, you know, people change and things change and stories change, so I, I just think a three-year is a lot more.
So you'd rather pay more for a three-year contract?
Well, I don't think that's a given.
She just said it was.
Think things may change.
I mean, I think if you have. I mean, I think if you have five years-
It only goes up ten thousand dollars in the last two years, three thousand in the, in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
And there's a ninety day cancellation, I mean, for no cost, so.
No cost.
I mean, I questioned, I questioned it pretty hard, and I still have questions, but.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have, uh, change, Kathy, would you follow the roll on that?
So, this is a motion by Counselor Reach to amend it for a three-year contract.
Wouldn't you rather, before we vote to amend those, see the cost analysis breakdown?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna present it to you, so it is more expensive because they don't want a three-year contract. So, you're asking a question that's rhetorical.
Right, but why would you sign up for something you don't know what it's gonna cost, I guess is?
Why would you sign up for something that is gonna cost you more? She just told us it's gonna cost you. That these numbers don't-
Dan, they're gonna present-
Every time I turn around and we sign a contract, Karen, and we actually get the work done, or we have the people come, or it's getting done, it doesn't get done for a year or two later, and it's always a lot more money. And never bothers anybody sitting up here. That's just the cost of living.
Why are you asking for a, a higher number? You're asking for a higher number, a higher fee for the city.
I am proposing to amend this, to eliminate the last two years and keep the numbers the same in year one, two, and three that are in this. That's what, that's what the end is.
So, typically, you know, this contract that's drafted is what's been reviewed by our management team. If the council decides to make an amendment to the contract, I would certainly take that back to our executive director. Any contracts have to go before our board to be approved. Also, this is, and again, this isn't a standard. A three-year contract would not be a standard term.
And, and-
So, that pricing may, so the pricing may change, as I mentioned, because a three-year contract is not a standard term for us.
I, I myself would agree with you, John, if it wasn't an exit plan, but since there's an exit plan, I can cover.
That's fine. That's my opinion. I'm perfectly-
You know, do you wanna vote on that?
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's a, this question is valid because, I mean, people should know why we're handing out five-year contracts. I mean, it's not, and if you didn't ask that question, then if somebody didn't ask that question, I think it's wrong.
I agree. If it wasn't-
I don't agree with that. Absolutely.
And I think they should be able to do the three years at the rates that are in here for the first three years, and if they aren't, then we deal with it then.
So, why don't we table it and see if they will come back with the new number?
Why don't we just amend it and have them come back? Then it'll be adopted. Hard for them to say no.
By now, like the price.
Just vote, let's vote.
For a new price, we're, we have the price in front of us. We're just eliminating the last two years of the contract. And, and if they wanna come back and say it's not acceptable, then that's up to them.
I think you could vote on whether you, whether there's enough votes to, to change it or not, and vote, go from there.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
This is to amend. Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Not really, but if, if they're, if, she's just gonna take it back to her people, and then they're gonna come back with another contract, so that's what's mine.
Maybe not. Well, they should be able to do it for those three years. That's what they're doing now, so.
You're changing your vote to no, sir. Mayor Skelly?
No.
Counselor Dillaba?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
No.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Denied.
Okay, I have more questions on this contract, so. Basically, under the management services on page four, develop recommended operator training programs to obtain additional water and wastewater licenses and maintain required con, contact hours for recertification of licenses. So, I'm not sure who we're training, but I would like to see Augsburg employees get, get trained.
Yes, that's exactly what that is about.
Okay.
That is-
I had a discussion with Shane, and, and right now, apparently, we don't have qualified employees.
You don't, but that's because the requirements in New York State are such that depending on the education level of your employees, it can take up to ten years for an employee to get their four A license. So, we are progressing your employees through the qualification process and making sure that they're attending the trainings that they need to attend. And then, as they obtain licenses, there are, there is contact time that they need to maintain their licenses. We're making sure that they're attending those training sessions. Some of the training that's offered is actually offered through the Development Authority at no cost to the city. And so, we're making sure that we can take advantage of that training as well, so it keeps the cost down for the city.
So, we would be using the Augsburg facilities to do this training?
Uh, what do you?
So, our, our wastewater treatment plant or our water filtration plant?
The training is usually, is, is off-site typically, training that's required, and it has to be certified by, for, for the wastewater credits has to be certified by the Department of Environmental Conservation. And for the water plant, it has to be certified by the Department of Health. So, it isn't training that we actually do. It's training that actually has to go through, sorry, an approval process with the DEC or the DOH. And then only those accredited courses count towards contact time. And then the basic training that the operators have to go to is in SUNY Morrisville. So, that's training that you do have to send your operators away to. But as they get to the point where they can progress and take those classes, as you have new staff in, there's minimum time that they have to be in the position before they can go to school. Those staff have been programmed in and, as budget's available, they're sent to that training so they can obtain all the training that they need. So, that is, that is our goal as well, is to license up the, the city staff. Licensed operators are better operators. They have a better understanding of the process. They operate the plant better. That's in everybody's best interest.
Exactly what I wanted to see. All right. Excellent.
Thanks. So, now we have a vote on the five-year contract.
The original resolution. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
No.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Our next item of business is also read by Director of Planning and Development, some city manager.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a contract with Paradigm Environmental LLC. Whereas the city of Augsburg desires to submit a U.S. EPA cleanup grant application for Thirty Main Street. And whereas a hazardous building material survey has been completed and has identified both friable and non-friable asbestos-containing material. However, cleanup grant applications must have an ASTME one-nine-zero-three-nineteen Phase Two Site Assessment Report or Reports equivalent to Site Investigation, which must be attached to the application. And whereas the city of Augsburg is the recipient of an environmental site assessment funds from the Department of State, Contract C one-zero-zero-two-zero-eight-three. And Thirty Main Street is one of four eligible sites for Department of State Environmental Site Assessment Funds. And whereas Paradigm Environmental LLC of Poughkeepsie, New York, has been working with the city, conducting air monitoring during the citywide demolition process and is familiar with Thirty Main Street and is capable of meeting the EPA deadline. Now therefore be it resolved that the interim city manager is authorized to enter into a contract with Paradigm Environmental LLC for a sum not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars for environmental site assessment work required to submit a 2023 environmental cleanup grant application, and be it further resolved that expenses for this project will be charged to the Department of State Environmental Site Assessment Contract number one-zero-zero-two-zero-eight-three.
I'll move that.
I'll second that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly? Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by Director of Planning and Development, interim city manager.
So, a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a contract with the Development Authority of the North Country. Whereas the city of Augsburg has been awarded a one-million-dollar Northern Border Regional Commission grant for the renovation of the Main Street Pump Station. And whereas the scope of work includes the addition of SCADA supervisory control and data acquisition services that will enable real-time communication between equipment and the wastewater treatment plant. And whereas the Development Authority of the North Country is able to provide this service through an intermunicipal agreement in accordance with the Northern Border Regional Commission and local procurement policies. Now therefore be it resolved that the interim city manager is authorized to enter into a contract with the authority in accordance with the terms of the city's NBRC grant agreement and the agreement attached here, too, for a sum not to exceed fifty-two thousand dollars to provide SCADA services at the Main Street Pump Station. And be it further resolved that the expenses for this project will be charged to the Main Street Pump Station Capital Project.
I'll move that.
I'll move it. Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Public Works, Shane Brown.
A resolution establishing the rates for the waste-receiving station. Whereas the WPCF has been under a consent order from the Department of Environmental Conversation since two thousand seventeen, placing restriction on the waste haul in the Water Pollution Control Facility. And whereas that, as part of the capital improvement project, the city of Augsburg has completed the construction of the new waste-receiving building at the Water Pollution Control Facility. And whereas Article eleven of Chapter one-seventy-seven of the city's existing sewer use code pertains to the trucking, trucked and hauled waste and states that the fee charged to the waste haulers will be established by the city council. Now therefore it be resolved that the city of Augsburg, city council establishes the rates for receiving septicage as five cents a gallon and leachate at five cents a gallon. Be it further resolved that in order to ensure compliance with the WPCF Station Pollution Discharge Elimination Systems permitted and outside, outside or hauled waste entering the WPCF must first complete an application and be issued a permit.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
How'd you come up with the five cents?
It was, uh, the Development Authority provided us what everybody in the region gets.
Right, I saw Malone gets a dollar, ten cents, Watertown gets five cents, eight cents, and Plattsburgh. I mean, we just, this is like state-of-the-art facility. Auburn, sixty-two cents. I think we should get a little bit more than seeing that the rate payers in Augsburg are gonna pay for the next thirty years. I think we should get something for the stuff coming in, a little bit more.
I had the same thought there, Steve.
We wanted to keep ourselves competitive.
Well, you know what? I don't even care, because you know what? They're gonna bring it in if we're closer. You're either gonna spend it on gas or you're gonna come here. So, let's not shortchain ourselves just when we're starting it out.
I kinda like the six cents number. I mean, most of these places are like that. But do you think if we went a penny lower, that we're gonna pick up people who normally go to Watertown?
I, I don't know. I guess we could start at the six cents if that's your choice. Let's see where we go from there. We could always come back to it and bring it down.
But Auburn's at sixty-two cents. Malone is at ten cents. Plattsburgh's at almost nine cents. So, why would we be at five cents?
Yeah, I go ten cents.
I mean, bottom line, this is the starting point that we're gonna start pulling in money if we wanna become-
Don't we compete with can?
I don't believe there's anybody else in Saint Lawrence County that can accept the waste besides us.
I'd, I'd go with twenty cents, but I think it- Do I hear twenty-five?
I was, I was just thinking the six fell in line with, with most of them.
No, it doesn't. That's, that's it. I mean, some of them are.
I'm not sure if that Auburn one might be a typo. I'm assuming it's probably six, maybe six.
Yeah, because if you look at the other leachate next to it, it's six cents, so it might have just been a-
A typo.
Yeah.
And then you got like, you know, you got places like Carthage that are two cents.
So, if you figure the price of transport, I think we're not gonna hurt ourselves with six cents. Do you wanna go seven?
Whose table is this?
This table came from the Development Authority, so I really couldn't say that that-
Is that? Malone is, uh-
Ten cents. We should go ten cents.
I think ten cents is, I'd rather go ten cents.
And we're the only ones you can bring it to? In Saint Lawrence County.
Yeah, I'd say ten cents on both of them.
It's kind of a number. Yeah.
You know, just after the fact and raise it if necessary after we, after we see what comes in.
I'd make, I'd make a motion to make it ten cents for, for both septicage and leachate.
Wait a minute, before we do the ten cents. You know, I, I know Shane said the five cents will keep us competitive, which, that's fine. And I, and I do wanna raise it, but do you think the ten cents would hurt us? Does anybody from Dank think that the ten cents would hurt us, and why?
I think they wanna stay out of this. Or, no, there is a reason why they do.
Okay.
Oh, all right. So, they didn't recommend these numbers. We, we, they gave us this chart. We-
We don't, not from the landfills.
How long has it been since? We, they gave us this chart, and me and Andrea came up with this five cents. Let me make that clear. They, they didn't come up with, they didn't recommend. There's no conflict in this, so they don't wanna make the recommendation.
How long, when was the last time we were accepted waste like this?
Uh, we have taken small amounts from the county, from their landfills.
No, I'm talking the, the competition out there that's gonna-
The only people we've accepted it from since I've taken over is the county, and that's at the five, they pay five cents right now, the county does to us.
But how many years has it been, like your haulers, like say?
Yeah, it's been before two thousand seventeen's the last time they were there.
Okay. Ten cents. I, I'd go to ten. So, at ten cents, a thousand gallons, you're charging them a hundred bucks. So, if someone empties out their septic tank, it's a hundred-dollar bill to the Augsburg and whatever it is to the person doing it. I mean, I, I, I don't know what, what do rate payers here pay for a thousand? What's the estimate on a thousand? What do we pay?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the way it should be.
So, we have a three-year agreement.
Yeah, we do have an agreement on this. Yeah, with the county.
So, that one-
That's probably a five-year agreement, or is that a?
I don't think it's a five-year agreement. Have to look it up. Like I said, that's been in place for, I'm not sure how many.
Yeah, well, when it expires, it go up to ten cents unless someone wants to change it.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe not enough votes to do ten cents.
You're gonna motion for ten?
Motion and a second, I think.
Ten cents.
Kathy, would you call the roll on this?
This is to amend. Counselor Kennedy? Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved. Mayor, now we have to vote as amended, please. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy? Yes, approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city's top drawer, Angela Bray.
Angela is attending. She's actually on now. I apologize. She was able to get on.
Good evening. This is a resolution, this is a resolution introducing a local law and providing for public notice and public hearing to authorize a property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal, municipal law, section three dash C. Be it resolved that the proposed local law of the year two thousand twenty-two entitled Amendment to Authorize an Override of the Property Tax Cap for two thousand twenty-three be and hereby is introduced before the city council of the city of Augsburg, New York. And be it further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the city council. And be it further resolved that the city council hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the city council chambers at six P.M. on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. And be it further resolved that the city clerk publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the city of Augsburg of said public hearing at least seven days prior there, too.
I'll move it.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Reach?
Um, no.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
No.
Counselor Dillaba?
No.
Counselor Fisher? Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Denied.
Working hard tonight.
A resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute change order number ten to the contract for the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project contract with Jet Industries Incorporated.
That's, that's good. Maybe just give a summary after. I'll, I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Just kinda have a summary.
Yeah, this is for, uh, change order work that's been completed for the city. It is necessary work to move the critical path along for the project.
And it's three hundred and-
It's, yep, it is for amount of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-eight cents. Taken out of the contingency fund.
The money was already allotted, so it's, it's just, it's not, we're not reaching for extra money, so the people know.
Yeah, yeah.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yeah.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Oops, sorry, yes.
Counselor Reish?
No.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by Director of Public Works, Jean Brown.
A resolution authorizing interim city manager to execute change order number eleven to the contract for the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project contract with Jet Industries Incorporated.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
I'd make, I'd make a motion that a, another paragraph, be it further resolved that all portions of this change order that are the responsibility of the Village of Hubelton estimated at fifty percent will be billed to the Village of Hubelton. I'll second.
Kathy? It's all, it's all in the scope of the work anyway, isn't it? I mean, ultimately, we could, we don't even need to mo- we don't need a resolution or amendment to do that, to bill them.
I, I think that adding the language does, does make it clear, so I think it's-
Okay.
A good idea for council to do that.
Okay.
Kathy, would you please call the snivin' resolution?
This is to amend. Mayor Skelly?
Yeah.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Approved. And now mayor, as amended, please.
Yes.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yep.
Counselor Reish?
No.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yeah.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city managers, any respects.
This is a resolution to call for a special city council meeting on Monday, November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. At City Hall, City Council Chambers, Augsburg, New York.
I'll move that.
Second.
Just as part of discussion, I, I was informed today that, um, I may have a personal matter that may conflict with that meeting that night, but I'll keep everybody posted.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business?
I do. Um, in reviewing the city budget, I noticed that, um, the new preliminary budget, um, in terms of the water and sewer portions of the budget have different, um, line items. They're different from what we accepted in the original budget. And that we held a public hearing on, I think. So, I think we need to go back and re-accept those in the new, in the new and sta- and start over on those, because they are different. So what was presented has changed. So. What? That's because they're all three different entities, but it's true.
Yeah, so that is correct. Um, and council can certainly call for a new public hearing, should you choose to. You are not required to. You have, how's your public hearing?
Water and sewer fund?
You had a public hearing on your water and sewer funds, so you can make changes.
But we, we didn't amend it, though. Staff amended it. We accepted it and then staff amended it, and I'm trying to make sure everybody's aware that it's changed and that we'll accept it again.
Sure. The rates have not changed, but you, you certainly can, can for clarity's sake have and call for, um, a public hearing.
I think we should. I don't, I mean, if we're not required to have a public hearing, it would probably suffice that it's part of the budget, as long as everybody's clear that they're different numbers, that's all.
Right. I think in the initial draft that was physically presented to you, it didn't include those in it. The, the draft that you have adopted does include the water and sewer budgets, and they are, uh, different than what was initially presented in October to council, to reflect the staffing.
So I think we should, at the next meeting, accept the new water sewer budgets, or do it tonight, if we can, that's fine. I'll make a motion to accept the new water and sewer budgets. We can do that.
We already accepted it, but-
Nothing, not, not new, it's changed.
No, we, we, we called for a public hearing.
We accepted it and we called for a public hearing. But the number didn't change. The water and the sewer budgets, we did. So I, I, I'm fine with accepting it, just so everybody's aware that they're different and, you know, we're accepting the new preliminary water and sewer budgets. I think we need to do that, because it's different than what was presented before. So-
Just as good to show it on the website?
It, it is up on the website.
But it's a, it's a process you're supposed to go through. And we-
You're making a motion?
Yeah.
You have a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I missed the second. Who was, thank you.
Could you call the roll and?
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Sure.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly? Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Jilibah?
Sure.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Now, can you look into whether or not this, when we hold the public hearing on the full budget, if that suffices, or do we have to hold separate, separate public hearing for water and sewer?
I did talk with Kathy about this. I believe you are not required to hold a, a second public hearing, but you certainly can choose to. So if you'd like to have a second public hearing on the water and sewer, as, as amended in this budget that you adopted and is posted on the website, you may do so.
I'm fine. We have, we have a, a public hearing coming up on the city budget, which includes the accepted, now revised and accepted water and sewer. That's, I'm fine with that. So.
Yeah, different old business?
No, I, I have a question. Uh, so council just voted not to go over, exceed the tax cap. What is the tax cap?
You voted not to hold the public hearing.
Oh.
I believe that our comptroller will likely address this with you in person on the twenty-eighth and likely ask for you to reconsider your vote on not to hold the public hearing to allow the city to override the tax cap, should there be an error in the budget. So that was what was voted down, the call for the public hearing.
That's just a standard motion we do every year. Case there's an error, and it needs to be adjusted throughout the year, kinda like this year's.
Uh, we haven't done it.
We, we, we have to, so on July twenty-third, I think we re-appropriated two point two million dollars in budget. So if we, if there was any kind of a mistake in the budget this year in the twenty-three, uh, we wouldn't be allowed to do that by voting no against that.
Did we do it this year or last year? Did we vote for that?
Council voted it down last year.
We haven't, we've never done that. We haven't done a TANs either.
Yeah.
And it was for a public hearing, but it was a public hearing on a local law to override the tax cap.
Correct.
Right. Just so we're clear.
Um.
Any other old business?
I, I don't know if this would be old business or not. I, I was going through some of the emails and I noticed, I don't know, pardon? I'm sorry. Uh, Andrea, can you, there was, there was a grant procedure through the, through New York State for a water, it was like a six hundred and fifty million dollar water infrastructure grant process, um, that came out in April, the, the, the governor had announced. Um, I don't know, I, where we sit, or, or if we ever did anything with that or, or if there's any possibility that it may still be in play to be able to, um, get ourselves in the game with that. Um, I'll, I'll send the information. I believe I may have shared it with some. Um, you might be familiar with it, I'm not sure. It might be something that's not readily available, but, uh, I, I, I wasn't sure if this was something that was discussed earlier in the, in the year. This came out in April of two thousand twenty-two. Um, it was shortly right around the same time, I think I forwarded it to everybody. It was right around the time there, there was, uh, federal grants out there for infrastructure, not infrastructure, but aging buildings and historical buildings and grants for roofs and whatnot. Uh, I, I don't know, are you familiar with this at all? Or if not, I, I'll, I'll surely send this along. I, we may be late in the game for it. Um, I see there's plenty of communities that benefited from it, some of them right up in the North Country, and, uh, I was just kinda curious on that.
Guess if you forward on the information, I can let you know if it is something that we applied for, and I can let you know the status of it.
Thank you, dear.
You're still on old business? Still on old business?
Yeah.
So, um, in the interest of trying to find additional ways to raise revenue, I talked to future Senator Mark Walzick today about the concept of requesting from the state of New York pilot payments. Um, and he is more than happy to carry a bill in that regard. I haven't heard much from Richie's office, I don't know why. But, um, he's more than happy to carry a bill for, starting in January in that regard. And he thought there was different ways of approaching it. Um, it could be part of an AIM formula, I think he said. And, uh, in, in, in the meantime, I don't know if I mentioned it before, but I think the school board has adopted a resolution in support of our effort. So, that's good progress.
Um, this brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new bits?
Yeah, I do. Uh, something that was discussed, um, earlier in the week related to a potential source of revenue recognized, kinda piggybacking John's, um, initiative here and his conversation with Senator, uh, future Senator Walzick related to, um, a potential source of revenue related to tax-exempt properties in the city of Augsburg. Is there any possibility or legal way that we could look at possibly using a, almost as if you'd call it a usage fee for any service that the city would provide, whether it be emergency services, uh, you know, security calls, uh, from the fire, police, D P W, you know, to any of these entities that, uh, that, uh, require our services or assistance, is there any way that we can bill them for those services, recognizing them as a tax-exempt property?
The only legal mechanism I know of is water and sewer bills, and that's why it's done that way. I don't think you charge other, uh, other municipal services to not-for-profits, but I, I'm not the expert, I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, we've looked at it, I know, several times before. State law changes. Maybe.
Uh, so, any, uh, new business? Um, items for discussion?
Outside water fees. Um, we were talking about raising the rates for the taxpayer and city. Um, like for places like this, like United Health or up on the hill, do they pay water, do they pay, do they pay water rate?
Yes, they do.
Do they still pay the same as they were paying? And have they been paying?
I can get a report on it for you.
Must have gone way down. It's under a meter, so must be a lot less.
But they are, they are, they are definitely charged.
They are charged in outside water, yeah.
And, and did we ever, uh, adopt the sewer charges for the Village of Hubelton as part of that project? I don't remember adopting that. And I had brought up a question about, um, would the cheese plant Hubelton, which has a high biological oxygen demand, be treated as an industrial user? Remember that, Kerry? We talked about that, and I even, I've never got answers on those.
I will have to pull that and see what the council, I don't know off the top of my head, um, whether, I know we've talked about that with the previous city manager, I'd have to, I'd have to pull that out and look at it. I can give an update-
Yeah, I don't remember us ever adopting rates for them, and, um, I don't know when they're coming online. They're making progress in the line, I see. Um, is that figured into next year's budget? Is a next year project? And if so, where's the rates that we're supposed to adopt? I think there was talk of a rate plus, uh, you know, their charge for payments for the capital improvements that have been done. You know, they have to contribute toward those payments as well, so.
We have-
I don't know where that is.
We have accounted for revenue in the sewer fund from Hubelton, but I will, uh, circle back-
So, did we adopt rates then, or are we using our rates for that calculation?
I will circle back with the Director of Public Works and our comptroller, and if you haven't adopted them, we can get them on your agendas to adopt.
Thank you.
So I think you had a couple items.
I do, one if you don't have others. So I did want to just give you all an update. I'm confident sort of that this is not what Counselor Powers was talking about, but we did apply to E F C through their engineering planning grant program for funding for an inflow and infiltration study. We requested a hundred thousand dollars. Um, we did receive an allocation of fifty thousand dollars through that grant application. So we'll be working on bringing that to you all.
But that doesn't affect the volume of water that's going to the plant, right? Cuz those are, those were for lines that go into the river.
This is a study that will look at where our system has areas of greater inflow and infiltration in an effort to reduce, um, ultimately to reduce sewer, sewer overflows. Um, it's, it's significantly less than we applied for and requested, so we will have to scale the project. Um, but that has been awarded, so I wanted to update council on that, and you'll be hearing more about that, uh, in our plans in future meetings. Um, so that's all I have on the grant updates.
Uh, anyone else for discussion?
I do also have-
There's still budget work.
Budget work, work sessions. So, uh, the budget memo that I provided you did state that staff would be prepared, uh, to begin work sessions immediately upon adoption. I know council has emailed back and forth and is eager to get those started. My recommendation is not to have independent discussions with, uh, departments, but rather to have all department heads present, because as you add and, and subtract from one department, it will inherently have im- implications on other departments. So I would recommend, um, the first work session to be established for six P M. on Wednesday, the sixteenth. And, um, if there's a need for a second one previous to Thanksgiving, we could do that the following Tuesday at six P M., which would be the twenty-second. Um, you all have a, a, a special meeting on the twenty-first, so I, I believe that date is off the table. And this Thursday, there's a fire chief's meeting in Hubelton, so our fire chief would not be available on Thursday.
So you wanna review the budget in its entirety?
No, no.
I just want the budget sessions to include all department heads.
Oh. So they're not gonna be individually, like, so if the police chief-
But we will be looking at police and fighter.
We can talk about all of the departments, but I'm requesting that all department heads be present, because every meeting- Every, every decision that you make in one department will have implications for other departments, and you may have questions for- and you may have questions for other department heads, so I'd like them all to be present.
So who would we focus on on Wednesday?
We'll start wherever council wants to start.
I'd like to start with revenue. I don't think we typically do that, and I think it's important to go through that line by line and have a discussion on that.
We can certainly do that.
And, um, you know, as part of that, we can talk about fund balance, where we're starting, where we're projected to end. I believe it's a break-even budget, or is that?
We're not projecting a surplus.
Yeah. You're not projecting a deficit.
I've presented a balanced budget, counselor.
Break-even. Uh, I'm, I'm available anytime, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday. I mean, I think we should start going through these things.
So we'll start Wednesday.
So let's start Wednesday, right?
I said back on the. But don't we have, don't we have to decide a schedule tonight, so she can make notice and stuff?
We can meet on, um, Wednesday. The next date I would recommend is the twenty-second, if you want to go into the week of Thanksgiving. After that, um, we can set it at that work session. These are not special council meetings, these are public meetings, so.
Does she still have to give notice?
We do have to give notice, twenty-four hours notice.
You're saying Wednesday and Tuesday?
Yes, sir, yes. That's my recommendation at this point in time.
And what, what topics would we discuss at those two?
You suggested that we will start talking revenue. We can be prepared to do that, and we'll address any council questions.
But I'm, I'm hoping that we're, we are going to go through it department by department for the council's benefit.
We can do that. We will, we can do that if that's what council wants to do, and the various departments can articulate to council and the public the implications that the buzz, budget has on their, on their staffing, and how, what services would be cut, um, or changed. I just think it's important for all department heads to be present at the work sessions, which is, which is a different proposal than, than we've done in the past.
No, I like that.
I think that's, that's, that's great, because if we have a question for, like you said, one, that it might be in the fire department, but we're, you know, with the police department right now, or DPW.
Could we do revenues, folks, uh, revenues and general government at the first meeting? And public safety at the second meeting, for starters?
Well, what I, I'm, the thing I'm hearing is that every department head will be there, and we'll have a consensus at the time. To talk to, or what day?
Well, I think if you're, you need to, you need to split up. I think an, a fire presentation is read, is due again. I mean, I don't think that.
Yeah, we can do both.
So I think, but I think you should, we should delegate, you can't put fire, police, and DPW on the same night. There's too much to cover.
No, I didn't say that.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is, so we can be prepared for Wednesday with our specific questions. We should decide which ones we want to concentrate on on Wednesday.
Revenues and general government is what I was suggesting, and that at the second one on Tuesday would be public safety, and then we would go from there.
So you're putting DPW and general government?
No. No, no, public works is separate.
I know that, but we have two nights set up to go.
Yup, so revenues and general government would be.
Don't you think that's a little light? I think we could add police or.
We can establish the date, and we can focus on general revenue, or revenue and general government, and we can see if we have time to talk about what other topics come up. Um, and we can also be prepared to focus the discussion on the twenty-second on public service, which includes public works, but, um, primarily, we'll ask the chiefs to discuss their staffing.
If you don't mind, the twenty-second is a very, very heavy workload day for myself. So, uh, if I'm asked to prepare, um, much on the twenty-second, my, my mind is going to be elsewhere for the majority of the day. So I, I would much rather present something to you on the sixteenth.
I'm fine with that.
If that's possible at all.
That's what I was, I was hoping.
Like I said, just on the, on the twenty-second, I'm going to be, uh, very busy with another task.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
Police, revenue, and general government, cover those three on Wednesday? Or is that too much?
Why don't, why don't we do the sixteen, twenty-second, twenty-third? I mean.
We were following her recommendations.
Well, no, I'm, it's, we, we keep putting this off and putting on more dates, and we didn't do this the last meeting, because we're going to do it tonight, because we're going to be here, and we lost the whole weekend of sitting down or doing anything. And on the first.
We have, we have staff conflicts on Thursday.
Well, okay.
So I'm recommending Wednesday and Tuesday, because you also already have scheduled a special meeting on Monday. Um, I don't recommend meetings on Wednesday, or Thursday, or Friday of the following week, because it is Thanksgiving week.
Well, I'm just, also Fridays, City Hall's closed. It seems like Fridays would be a good day, because everybody's here, and they're already here. They've had it on Saturdays before, and usually, you, usually you schedule them all, and you take care of it in a week, and then you get together and you, you start amending. And everything does affect everything else, but.
Saturday, the nineteenth is the Light of the Night Parade, so I, again, can't really recommend doing that on Saturday, because staff's already coming in to, to partake in that.
Saturday morning?
Saturday evening.
No, like, ten o'clock Saturday morning.
My recommendation is to stick with the sixteenth and the twenty-second and start from there.
Okay, I'm just saying, you got, you, you got.
But it is up to the council.
They might be gone, and we're sitting, because there's parades and stuff going on. We're not, we're just going to meet on days when we're comfortable. I, I think we should be just doing this, and we should have been doing this, and, and I said it at the first, I said it again the last meeting, and here we sit here again, and we're still not doing it. No, except the sixteenth and the twenty-second. And, and you're going to have a public hearing on the twenty-eighth. That gives you six, six days, in case you're not even close. I mean, I don't know. Just got to do it again.
You can do one on the twenty-first, before your six o'clock meeting.
I, I'll do it any day you want to do it. I mean, I don't care if it's a Saturday, Sunday, Monday, there's seven days in a week. I'm sure we could put off a little bit of our personal life for the next couple of weeks, seeing that what's at stake, but that's just my opinion. But. So Wednesday would be revenue, general services, and police.
Yes.
And then we'll decide on Tuesday. We'll have one on Tuesday, and we'll, we'll decide and talk about it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So we will set up for the sixteenth and the twenty-second?
Yeah.
At six P M.?
Yeah.
Yes. Great.
I don't know, you need to have all the department heads.
I think.
Because I, it, it could, every, every discussion we have related to any department could have an impact on any department. So it's, it's only, it's only proper to have everybody there.
Well, it's never been done that way in the past, so.
Yeah, yeah, it most certainly has.
There aren't that many of us anymore. I was going to say, it's four people.
This brings us to citizen participation at the time. Anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium.
Uh, yes, good evening, Mike, good evening again. Um, just, just a point of clarification, while the budget is in balance, it is in balance with use of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding.
And, and more taxes if you get here with it.
Right. And, um, based on the action, uh, to defeat the resolution on the, to hold the public hearing, absent reversal of that, that I think when you start your revenue discussions next week, uh, limiting the tax increase to round numbers to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, you'll be starting with four hundred thousand dollars less in revenue than is going to present to you in this budget. So it'll be your starting point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone, uh, attending remotely?
The first individual is registered as Margaret Haggerty. Uh, she has just disappeared, mayor. Her hand was up. I do not see any other hands raised.
Uh, we do not have a need for executive session, so I will make a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
All in favor?
Alright.